For July, September 5th, 2024. It's a pleasure to have each and every one of you with us. The first item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments outside of?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we'll go ahead to the public hearing. The first, number two, is a public hearing, number one, on the 2024-25 City of Irving fiscal year budget. And Shanae, we have speakers?
We do, and each speaker has three minutes. I let you know when one minute is left. Our first speaker is Jerry Wicker, followed by Roy Getting.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hillman, members of the council, my name is still Jerry Wicker. I'm still 76 years old and I still live in Coffield, but I'm here today to talk about COLAs. And I've been talking about COLAs and benefits for the city for about 35 years. I've been retired for 21 years. And I want to today, well, first, let me ask you a question.
Mr. Wicker, could you move the microphone a little bit more? Yes, thank you.
Oh, good. Now, I have been asked to represent a bunch of retirees. I don't know if y'all can answer this question, but I know that I've sent y'all a bunch of emails and I've asked for other people to send emails or to make phone calls. This morning at 5:00 a.m., I was making up another email to send to y'all. And I want to apologize how badly, how poorly that thing was written, but it was 5:00 in the morning. And 8:00, I went back in there and I was reading again. I said, oh, my God. I promise you, I do have a little bit more than a GED, although the email doesn't show it. So anyway, I don't know how many of you take the time to read them, but I hope y'all read all of them, because all of them are very concerning. I want to tell you that we, the retirees and the people who still work here, we feel that we must ask all of you to support going ahead and moving forward with a 50% COLA this year. I've heard the monies and I understand that, but the, with the economy doing what it was, and I will tell you that when I worked for the city, I was on a benefit board, and I used to go out to the city yard and talk to the employees out there about their benefits and explain to them about what TMRS was. There, every one of them were impacted when we lost our 70% COLA pack in 2008. In my letter that I sent to y'all, I told you that all of us felt that that was-
One minute left.
-an assault on all of us. And as it continued for multi-years, I consider that to be a terrorist act. But I want to tell you that in my P.S. on my letter, I said, "I've worked with employees and retiree benefits for all city employees for over 35 years. Many of those employees were low-wage earners. They are probably retirees and employees who I worry most about. I don't see how they can make it as a family." Remember, there's a new TMRS regulation about no look-back for COLAs. We're almost through doing that with the 70% people who can't get one. And based on that, I think it would be a good time to look forward, to go in forward with the 50% COLA.
Thank you.
Thank all y'all, and please support this. Good day.
Roy Getting.
Thank you for the work y'all do.
This is our last speaker on item two.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Roy Getting. I reside at 2208 Rita Court, Irving. Tried to keep it a little shorter last time, but still want to hit on the idea, you got accounts there with dollar amounts on it, no description. Simple as that. Draw a line through it. If they can't describe what it is, let's just call it what it is, a slush fund. Not with my money. Not with my money. One of the other things we were looking at was going through there, and you're paying people to be translators, bilingual. Well, I served as election judge. I get a nice county phone that has what's called Language Line Insight. It will translate 250 languages, and you just got to pay a license fee for it. Sounds pretty simple to me and save us a whole lot of money, because they're paying out a whole lot for translating. One of the other items we might look at doing is, one of the heavy items you guys get to discuss is the pension funds. Most everybody in the real world has switched to IRAs or equivalent of 401Ks or something like that. Do the same thing. Now, you're stuck having to, could only do that on new hires, but it saves everybody else a whole lot of money, and it's up to them to figure out how to invest their money. One last item real quick was, I went through your nice 3, Irving 360 program. You start off by getting these real nice embossed folders. Well, in this year's budget, you've got over $1,000 per person in there. Every one of the places we visit, yeah, we learned a lot, but we got a lot of swag. I'm looking at this, some of the stuff, I'm going, I paid for this? Some of it, I don't even know what it is. But me to cut this budget back, it's my point of view, it looks like it might be pretty easy to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanae. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, number one, on the fiscal year 2024-25 proposed tax rate.
Mr. Getting, you're up again, followed by David Palmer.
Can I make a comment on the last item?
I think we're just taking input tonight. But I'm sure if you want to, go ahead.
Sure. He can do that. It's a public hearing, so it's fine.
Yeah. We'll go back to number one.
I'll keep it short, but I did have the opportunity to speak with Mr. Getting, which I appreciate, and we went over some of the issues, but I did see what seemed to be blanks on budget items, even some sizable items. I talked with Chris about that, and I think they're going to be filling those in. They're, I don't know if I'm reading it right or whatever. It seems to be like aggregate items that are down below whatever the description is, but I think it'd be helpful to repeat the description as those numbers appear in the budget.
Brett, could you please walk through?
Okay.
Yes, sir, you're correct. Brett, could you please walk through that?
Yes, sir. The budget line item detail, the two large six-inch binders we gave you two weeks before budget retreat, has all that line item detail in there, but on the summaries, it is, it does summarize those into groupings, salaries, benefits, large items. So what we're going to do is we're going to go back and look at how we present that to the council and to have a little bit more, it's very transparent. We documented every line. Chris has reviewed it during budget retreat. So we know what's in there, and it's not like we're hiding anything. It's just that, in the interest of space, because it is two six-inch binders worth of detail, but we can adjust that so that it's a little easier for you to see as we go through, and so that each of those iterations does not roll up like that when we get the full detail in there.
Yeah. It's, Mr. Getting, to your point, it's broken out by budget code, and what the system doesn't do is it doesn't break out what that name is per budget code, and that's the detail. So we'll make sure that we put as that budget code, even though the number's there, we're going to make sure that here's an exact description of what that budget code is. Now, the descriptions are in the summaries, so it could be detailed out, so our residents do know, but in the actual budget code breakout, it does not list each one of those budget code names. So we hear you, we understand, and we'll make that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item number two.
Roy Getting, 2208 Rita Court. Again, what I was saying earlier, there's a lot of places in there that could be cut, reduced, excessive spending, extravagant spending, whichever way you want to word it, but it all needs to be cut. We got smaller towns that are able to have a no-tax rate going on their fifth year. So maybe you need to go to a small town, find a manager down there, and who knows how to live within a budget. Thank you.
David Palmer.
Thank you, mayor, council, staff, city managers. It's nice to see all of you tonight. I came down here to ask for a cut in the tax rate. I would like you to ask yourselves, and look at this budget, I don't know what one penny of the tax rate exactly makes. My guess, I mean, it's about $2.5 million or so. Four. So there should be some way to look in the budget and figure out.
4.1. Sorry to interrupt you, David.
4.1. Okay, 4.1. There should be some way to look in the budget and figure out where some money can come from, because over the last years, I don't think the city has recognized 1% drop in revenue. They've had an increase in revenue every year, both property taxes and sales taxes. Year before last, the city collected, before all the other little deductions that come into play, about 15% more in revenue than they did the year before that. Last year, you gave us a half a cent tax rate, and under the, what I would really, if this day is called a joke of SB2 with this supposed cap on tax rate increases, you know, you lowered the tax rate by half a cent, you could have increased it by four cents, and you still took an 8% increase in revenue in. And this year, you're looking at another budget where you're looking at bringing in around 11% more. Well, that has been steady, consistent increases in revenue and one slight half a cent give-back to taxpayers. And I understand you've got competing interests in this budget, and I believe more strongly or as strongly as anybody sitting up there about infrastructure development and streets and water and those crucial pieces-
One minute.
...of what's done here. Public safety, public protection, the fire department. You've had one speaker talk about increases in COLAs, you've had another talk about decreases in spending. And so I know you have competing interests, but I hear a lot of talk about this conservative stuff, you know, but I don't hear it in terms of budget stuff, you know, about really to call out and challenge something, you know, about a budget. We're out of the two or three, 200, 250 million or so that's being spent out of these combination of taxpayer, how really $2.5 or $3 million can't be come up somewhere? So that, you know, this is a good place for the workers that work here, and it's also a good place for the citizens who live here and the businesses who pay taxes here. So, again, start with what you wanted to tell them, tell them what you wanted to tell them, and then tell them what's told you again. I'd like to see the tax rate lowered some. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker.
Okay. Any discussion on any of item number two or number three? Brett?
Yeah, I'll make it quick, because I know we're moving tonight, but I am going to be proposing a tax rate cut. And I will share with everybody, I don't know how the best way to be, to do it, I don't know whether there'll be support for it or not, but I had some ideas, although some of my ideas, some of the structure Chris and I talked about earlier is, it's more complex as far as salary and benefits, that kind of thing, than initially I was thinking we're going to be able to do, but I mean, I've, there's a couple of things in there I think I'd like to discuss, maybe at our next meeting, or to think about. One of which would be, I think, one of the line items is $3 million for basically like savings for City Hall or something like this, and if we could scale that back, there's a half penny or so there. And so, you know, I'd like to see what everybody thinks about that, but I think, I mean, I've gone through the whole budget now again and gone line by line, and it's, we'd be here a long time, we're going to just quibble about little things, you know, it's, most of the things are very solid, they're very essential services, and we're dealing with the challenges of increased costs. Again, we're in pretty bad inflation, and the city has not been immune to it. And so, and I have all my ideas about what I'd like the state to do, but I don't, I'm not elected to the state, I'm only elected here, and so with, within what we can do, I think it would be worth consideration or even taking it down a half cent, because just personally, I feel like the city is getting increases and, you know, I don't think they're ostentatious by any means, but I also think that the taxpayer should get something back too, when you're maxing out your payments on property taxes, and we're not getting relief from the state. So it's really up to us to see what we want to do, but I mean, there's, there's a couple areas I can throw out there and see if there's any interest, and again, it's just my feeling on the issue. And the only consideration we always have is, are you cutting one-time expenses? Are you cutting, you know, long-term expenses too? So that's something to think about, because you can cut this year, but if you're going to put it back next year, it just goes right back up. So what I would look to is just either pausing or holding on several items that would be able to give a tax rate cut.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? We'll move on to the next discussion item, which is a work session item on UDC amendment proposed for standards for card rooms. Jocelyn, are you going to handle that?
I'm starting.
You're going to try.
Good evening. Jocelyn Murphy, Director of Planning. So these amendments tonight, these proposals are upon request, just to see if we can look at the card rooms and maybe tighten down the regulations a little differently. Indoor amusement was originally envisioned as arcades or other low-skill games of chance. Card rooms have been classified as indoor amusement based on the similar activity. Card rooms typically involving the game of poker typically operate different than indoor amusement, have proven to operate differently because of the longer hours and the potential higher parking needs. So the proposals include adding definitions of card room and card game. I won't read these in too much detail, because there are a lot. I do want to say that we're still working with legal kind of massaging some of these, some of the language, especially for card room, but it's where games of skill or luck are played for anything of value. Patrons are invited for a fee for membership to play the game. No person receives an economic benefit other than personal winnings. The term can include an area or room set aside for their card dice or similar games. It may also include some other amenities such as food or beverage service or other entertainment options. And then we also included a definition of card game, which would be a game using a deck of cards where a player places a bet based on cards held by the player, and except for the advantage of skill or luck, the risks of losing and the chances of winning are the same for all players. Another amendments, the second amendment, would be to amend the land use chart in the individual district sections to allow card rooms by conditional use permit in the CC community, commercial, and freeway districts only. We would also add in the development standards column in the land use chart that the card rooms prohibited in any other zoning district. The use is not proposed to be permitted in the CN neighborhood commercial where today indoor amusement is. Some of the development standards we're proposing would be a new section 3.21 for card rooms. The CUP again would be required, so would be required for the operation of card room would be expressly prohibited in any district except the CC community, commercial, and freeway, and may not be permitted through the SP1 or SP2 process. So we wanted to make sure it was clear that it was only allowed in the, those two district, CC and freeway by conditional use permit. Maximum size of a card room is proposed to be 12,000 square feet. We added some separation requirements. Cannot be located within 500 feet of a public or private school, religious facility, hospital, or any R-zoned residential district. That is consistent with our regulations for alcohol service. Alcohol is 300 feet. We're proposing 500 feet, which is consistent with our conditional use permit buffer. We've also added that a card room shall not be located within 1,000 feet of property for which a conditional use permit for another card room has been granted. So some separations between card rooms. We wanted to be clear that has to be compliant with Chapter 47 of the Penal Code. Also wanted to be clear that if they were going to consume alcohol, they would have to follow Chapter 3.3, which is our RAB regulation, or if they're going to be BYOB, they'd have to follow regulations of 18A that was recently adopted if they choose to bring alcoholic beverages on the premise for consumption. Also wanted to be clear that if they're going to do card games, that poker or any other card game would have to be done essentially by hand, could not be used, cannot use gaming machines, computers, or other electronic means to play the card game. We would add a ratio specific to a card room, be one space per 100 square feet. This is consistent with the general assembly use, and the research I did, this was a pretty high ratio, but that is, again, typically what we do for any assembly use that does not have fixed seating. So there would be a notification requirement per some new regulations that the legislature did last year. So we would have to send notices to all properties within CN, CC, and freeway districts that are not within 500 feet of an R-single-family district. That's because we already require a conditional use permit for indoor amusement in the 500-foot area from our single-family districts. So the, we would do two amendments in one notice. It would be the CUP in the R districts and indoor amusement definition, which we've talked about before, and then also this card room regulation, because the areas tend to overlap, so if we're going to do a notification, it would be more efficient to do them together. We do have to send notices per what was known as Senate Bill 929 to all the property owners and the tenants. So I've had staff running the GIS pretty heavily the last week or so. So far, we seem to be at about 1,532 postcards or notifications we'd have to send. Right now, we're at about 620 parcels and 912 addresses, which would be individuals, businesses, tenant spaces, that type of thing. We also would have to send these notices more than 10 days prior to the public hearing. We also have to do, I didn't add here, but publications 15 days before the first public hearing at PNC. So for the notifications, this is the map. Again, these are the areas that are in the CC, CN, and freeway districts that are not within the 500-foot buffer of single-family. So again, the single-family buffer already requires a conditional use permit, which was done before the Senate bill, and so these are the areas that would require notification. And in our mailing, we are proposing, because there are so many, a postcard that have just the basic information. We're preparing a QR code, and then we've also put together a webpage. I have a copy here I can hand out of just generally the wording that we have on the webpage that just basically tells people why we have the notice, what a non-conforming use is, and just basically how the changes might apply to them, and if they have any questions, where to contact, and what those public hearing dates would be. And when we did a research, the, well, the webpage would only affect clearly the businesses that are currently operating as indoor amusement event centers and nightclubs within the 500 feet of our districts. And when we did research through our CO exercise, we didn't find any. And then we also found that there was one currently operating poker room that would be within that area. So again, the next steps, here we are at the work session today. We would need to publish a notice in the newspaper, which would be 15 days before the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. We would need to mail those notices within 10 days. Do have to have, because it's a UDC amendment, a public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission, and then of course, a public hearing in consideration of city council. So the bottom of this slide has a couple of different dates that are up for discussion, and upon your direction, we would follow through with any notifications and agenda postings on those dates. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And I do have handouts, again, for the, what the webpage would look like. You'd like me to pass that out?
Brett?
I've looked and looked at this one, and the whole discussion to me is interesting that we're, we're creating a zoning category or doing a CUP for something like this, because when I checked, gambling is illegal in the state of Texas. And the compliance with Chapter 47 basically says a person knowingly commits, it's a Class A misdemeanor, if he knowingly uses or permits another to use a gambling place, any real estate building, room, tent, vehicle, boat, or other property whatsoever owned by him or under his control or rents or lets any property with a view or expectation that it be used. And so it's a defense to prosecution that gambling occurred in a private place and no person received any economic benefit other than personal winnings, and except for the advantage of skill or luck, the risks of losing and the chances of winning were the same for all participants. So the way I view that is like, it's that poker game these guys have in, in a private room or at a home somewhere, and there's six of them with their drinks and cigars and playing. Like, to me, this statute was not meant as what we're seeing now, is like, you go online to their website, you can buy a membership. There's like three tiers of memberships, and walk in a public shopping center and go gamble in Irving, Texas. And to me, I don't see how that is a compliance with the law that makes kind of a mockery of this gambling statute. With that said, though, which is why I've asked city manager and the chief to, I mean, I think we need to consult with somebody, is this illegal activity going on in our city? Because you go over there, the hours that they told us they're operating are not correct. I went over like on a weekday at 6:00, and the whole thing's full, and they're going to be putting businesses over there out of business, because there's no parking. And they're not doing valet like they said they were going to do and all that. But even all that aside, to me, that is not, that's in a shop. It's in a shopping center, which is, when you look at the definition of a private place, private place means a place which the public does not have access and excludes, among other places, streets, highways, restaurants, taverns, nightclubs, schools, hospitals, and the common areas of apartment houses, hotels, motels, office buildings, transportation facilities, and shops. So to me, I do not believe that that's a private place. Despite creative gymnastics or legal arguments, I will never believe that that's private if I can go online and buy and go over there tonight and gamble in Texas. And I mentioned that part, number two, is no person received any economic benefit other than their personal winnings. Well, that's not true. We know that, because they charge to go in there. And so with that said, I don't think this is an allowed use. I don't think they should have a certificate of occupancy. But with that said, I think you're trying to address some of the issues, and at least preliminary in my mind is, we're seeing the same issues we saw when we, we're seeing hookah lounges. And at least preliminary in my mind is we're seeing the same issues we saw when we were seeing hookah lounges. And so why don't we limit the hours of a, to me, what is illegal poker house? Like they should have to comply with the same hours that a hookah lounge does and not go all night. And I'm still concerned like, can we block off parking for the bakery, for the, the? What's it called?
The milkshake.
Yeah, the milkshakes over there and Michael's and all the rest of them. Because there's, and I'll walk to the bakery, I will, but not everybody will. But you have to park way out there. And it's, it's a, to me, it's a very public, it's heavy traffic in and out of there. It's heavy traffic in the parking lot. And so I like to see limited hours in addition to what you've done. And then I'd also like to add in, and again, going to my point of public versus private, 12,000 square feet, that's a lot of people. Like if it's a truly a private poker game, why don't we limit it to 1,000 square feet? And just say, okay, well, if, if somehow you can do it in a shopping center, let's limit the space where you're not dominating the parking lot, you're not. It's totally changing the use over there. And you'll see, you're going to see businesses go out of business because of it. So that would be another way to limit the traffic. So I'd like to cap it, if we could, at 1,000, 1,000 square feet. And then we wouldn't, the parking would be less of an issue, even though I like that ratio. I think it's, it's fairer. But I don't know how we'll ever enforce that because in, in the high hours over there, you're parking towards the end of where the restaurants are over on the other side. So you're walking across and, you know, it's a pretty heavy, heavy traffic. I mean, I know we've put the crow's nests over there too. So you're seeing increased break-ins of vehicles, criminal activity. And they've got a security guard. He kind of goes in and out of the rows over there. But, you know, I don't think he gets to everything. But to me, I don't, I don't see how they're legally operating. But if I can suspend my disbelief and they are, I'd like to limit whatever we do in these to 1,000 square feet where it's truly a private poker game and limit the hours of it. It doesn't need to be a 24/7 thing. That's my view at least. So thank you.
Mark?
I agree, I agree with Brad's recommendation, his proposal. And, and looking at the statute myself, I agree also with Brad's reading that poker houses are not permitted under this exception to the, to the gambling penal code provision. And so having this actually set up, you know, is something that we, where you can get, try to get this CUP when it's an illegal use, doesn't kind of make sense logically. But it is subject to Chapter 47 by the plain language of it, so that, that's clear that that's out there. But I think that it's important for us in considering any of these cases to bear in mind that what the statute actually says. And Brad, you know, laid it out, that the exception for the, for gambling is very limited for, it has to be like a, nobody makes any money except the people that actually have the winnings and it has to be a private event. And I think it has to be just the winner is able to benefit financially. So considering that, you know, we have this use out there, I think that there's something we definitely need to be looking at whether we should be, this should be permitted or not going forward. And the CO is something that should be looked at, looked at as far as whether it should be pulled or not because it is an illegal use.
Dennis?
Yeah, I got a question, I guess, for KO, illegal. So has any of these poker houses in other cities been challenged as to the legality of their operations?
Yes, City of Dallas, they did revoke a CO. There was a recent court ruling. The court didn't answer the question about whether this was an illegal use. I can probably go into more detail in executive session about that. But just know, we have been monitoring that case and have been in touch with the lawyer. They hired an outside lawyer to assist them with that. So we have been in close communication with them and with several cities that have permitted this use and have been working with the planning staff. And as Jocelyn mentioned, you have a draft ordinance. We are still working on the language. And we have also been in connect, contact with the chief as well to try to understand what is currently occurring and then take those considerations as we're drafting this ordinance. So I think there was an urgency to kind of bring this item to your attention because we have that existing use and solicit your impact and feedback.
Any other questions? Well, we'll go ahead, go ahead and look at what we talked about tonight, KO. And in the meantime, while you're in the process of putting it together, we'll have a couple of other meetings at different levels and we'll continue to see what we can come up with. All right, that brings us to our executive session, I believe. KO?
Mayor, is this special meeting concluded?
Yes.
The, the second special meeting is actually, we'll need to adjourn this meeting and reconvene the meeting in the first floor council conference room.
Okay. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting and then we'll re-gather in the back room.